Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Monday, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Voice, Martin, Dole, Crockett, Geske, Phillips.
We have a quorum. Tonight, as always, we begin with the approval of the minutes. We have our minutes included in the packet from our board meeting on October second of two thousand and twenty-three. Hopefully, everyone has had the opportunity to review them. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I'd accept the motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented by the clerk. Motion by Dole, second by Martin. Roll call.
Dole, Martin, Voice, Crockett, Geske, Phillips.
Motion carries. Public participation tonight, as always, I'm going to read the public participation rules for public comments. A time for you to address the board with your comments. This is not a question-and-answer session. If you have topics that you would like addressed, you can contact the village administrator during the normal business hours or set up an appointment. He will attempt to address those concerns to the best of his ability. Each commenter will be limited to three minutes, and we ask that if your comments have already been made by a previous commenter, that you don't continually repeat the same comments. The first commenter that we have on the sheet is Tim Stewart of Mantino.
Good evening, thank you. I just wanted to say, you know, I really understand both sides. In fact, I have friends on both sides, but with the expectation that the future is electric cars and buses, it's something we shouldn't have. The building is vacant today. Tomorrow, the building could be vacant and run down. The building, ten years from now, could be run down, is still vacant. I kind of feel like it's the cards dealt to us from probably from Washington with the New Green Hill and even Springfield. And I just hope it's a winner, but I think we should support it. I'm gonna walk out real quick, because I got another meeting.
I know you've got somewhere you've got to be, so thank you. Thank you. The next commenter is Darrell Lamore from Mantino.
Thank you for letting me speak my teeth. I'm a, I live in Mantino for eighty-one years now, and I've served on many committees, I've served on the boards of the village, I've served on many committees and boards, and had my opportunity to vote on a lot of things that may or may not spin according to the way I wanted. I voted on some things in the past that I disagreed with, but I voted because they were best, I thought was best for the village of Mantino, whether it was on the chief's board or committee or what. I voted for it because it was best for everybody. At this time, I would like to go on record and say, and if I had to vote on this right now, I would vote to yes, let them come in. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Terry King of Mantino.
Hi. A long time ago, I watched a movie called Don't Marry. I make signs. Don't Marry made the sign. So I'm gonna hold this sign here for three minutes, because I have three, because this is how I feel. Does anybody else feel this way? The next, the next one can have more faces up there. But I'm gonna stand here with this till my three minutes is up, because this is what I have to say.
Thank you.
Three minutes off, okay. I only want to make three support signs from now on, because that's what I normally do. I don't want to be doing.
The next commenter, the next commenter is Steve McGruder.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and trustees, for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Steve McGruder. I've been a lifelong resident of Kankakee County, currently retired. For my retirement, I was a business manager of IBW Local One Seventy-Six out of Joliet, Illinois, and I was president of Kankakee Building Trades for over thirty years. I have represented working men and women throughout Kankakee County for over forty years, most of them in the building trades, but many in other different trades. I've seen a lot of plant closures in my time in the building trades. Grovel plants, Aerosmith, Bungee, Gould Battery, Mortels, there's so many, I could go on and on and on. Those were great jobs, great-paying jobs. They were dangerous industries as well. Nobody knows what the dangers were in most of those industries, because it didn't come to anybody's attention at that time. I realize this one could be a dangerous industry as well. There are currently thirty-eight EV facilities in operation in the United States. There are a multitude that are under construction and a multitude more that are under approval to be built. Some are being opposed. I've been on the wrong side of many different things. The Hellwood Power Facility, same turnouts that we had there to oppose it, it's built. Centerpoint Properties, the Arsenal Properties, same turnouts, it's being built. North Point Properties, same turnouts, same amount of opposition, it's being built. I assure you that the best area practices that are available will be put into the construction of that building. And I also assure you that the building trades of Kankakee and Iroquois County stand ready and willing to do everything we possibly can to make sure that it is the safest facility that is built, it is newest, state-of-the-art type of facility. And currently, I've heard about all of the Chinese things, I would just like to rest at this. In the EV industry, I think there are four major players that are in it. Samsung, Panasonic, LG, and the other one doesn't come to mind, almost all of them, Chinese-owned operations. Everybody in this place probably owns a cellphone. Can you buy one made in America? I doubt it. Can you buy a TV made in America today? I doubt it. Go home tonight, look at the tags on the back of your clothes. Tell me where they were made at. Tell me how you buy those today. Very little is made in this country today. Here's, here's a possibility, here's a possibility. I'm not gonna interrupt your time, please don't interrupt mine. I've seen a lot of companies come and go, many good, many bad. But I will assure you that this building trades has done the best, and we have built nuclear powerhouses that were opposed. We have built other facilities in the area that have been opposed, and they're all operating to the best of their ability, and I don't know what thousands of things have happened.
Your time's up. Thank you. The next speaker is Todd Lambert. Okay. The next speaker is Tyler Rohrbar, Bradley.
My comments and opinions have already been voiced. Take your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Annette Lamore from Mantino.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you again for having the opportunity for us to speak. Tonight, I would like to begin by stating all the positives that I really like about Mantino, because I've lived here all my life. The people here are friendly and kind. We have a great fire department, a wonderful library, good schools and churches, good roads, a nice business district with nice diners and shops, and have wonderful grocery stores. We have so many public events that we all love. Music on the square during the summer months, movies in the park, Oktoberfest, the golf cart parade, the Christmas parade, Santa's arrival, beautiful decorations at Christmas. We are so proud of our town. The Memorial Day ceremonies at all of the Mantino cemeteries and at Religion Park honor our veterans. I have enjoyed swimming in Mantino Sportsman's Club beach, feeling safe when I'm walking or riding a bike through our village. The golf carts on the streets, I don't know what the exact number is, but I think it's nine hundred or more. And we have a lot of fun. It's very enjoyable. Our new public works building, I visited it on the weekend, and it's beautiful. It's very well-planned, it looks great, and it's gonna serve us in Mantino for many years to come. And thank you for the hat. I really appreciate that. Our parks are plentiful. The latest number I heard was fourteen, it might be higher, and they're kept up very well. The square on Second is an absolute favorite. Fundraisers, the people in our town really come together to help each other, and there are many who are suffering illnesses, cancer, loss of family members, et cetera. The Mantino Sportsman's Club is the ideal place for those gatherings, and I went to one of those over the weekend. There were at least five hundred or a thousand people there. And they were honoring the family where both the mother and the father were killed in a tragic motorcycle accident caused by a deer crossing the road in front of them. So the money was raised to help their children. I have a thirteen-year-old and an eight-year-old daughter. I am extremely thankful for our small town. So whatever happens here, let's not lose sight of this. Our small-town atmosphere, our safety, the controlled growth of business and population, and most importantly, input from our citizens. I hope we can keep our taxes down. I hope we can elect people who make good decisions, and elect people who want input from the community and who represent the community when they vote, and elect people who do not have a financial interest in promoting themselves through deals possibly made behind closed doors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next commenter is Mary Jo Justremsky of Mantino. The next commenter is Patrick Young from Mantino.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Pat Young from Rockville Township. I'm in close pressure with this project. Business representative, Local One Fifty, and sitting president of the Kankakee Iroquois Building Trades. We are in favor of this project. The ancillary jobs that could be spun off of this, and O'Pia Jones talking about, and other surrounding communities are already talking about. Not only that, some of the freshmen coming into Mantino High School, maybe this is on their radar, chance to go to Kankakee Community College, get an education there, and potentially work here. These are good jobs. We'll continue our dialogue with them to put in, place a PLA for this project, so it'll be built with a hundred percent in your credit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next commenter is Larry Weaver. Okay. The next commenter is Sarah Saran-A of Mantino. I don't have a last name. If you could state your last name, please.
My name is Alan. I'm here to talk to you about something a little different. I'm here to talk to you about butterflies. The monarch butterfly is one of the most well-recognized and treasured species in the insect population. Not only is the monarch a favorite among kids and adults alike, but is an instrumental pollinator that plays a pivotal role in the crop production and overall life cycle of our environment. Without the monarch and other pollinators such as honeybees, we would have no food to eat or clean air to breathe. However, the monarch was actually moved onto the endangered species list this spring. The fact that the monarch is nearly extinct is actually quite hard to believe here, because Mantino lies right along the monarch's natural migration path from Mexico to Canada. That path has actually recently been deemed the butterfly highway or the monarch highway by environmental organizations who are working to cultivate natural habitats for the monarch and other pollinators to eat, rest, and thrive along their migration. Our small town lies directly within that sixty-six-mile-wide path with numerous acres actively participating in the over one hundred and eleven thousand acres in Illinois where the monarch can safely survive. So why am I talking about butterflies? There is evidence to suggest that the environmental impacts this plant will have on our areas will single-handedly lead to the demise of the monarch. Between water and soil contamination, air pollutants, and increased water consumption, the carefully planned and cultivated butterfly highway could actually lead these creatures straight to their demise. No matter the positive benefits that proponents of this plant may tout, we do not have a right as a society to knowingly contribute to the extinction of another creature, which is exactly what this plant would be doing. The EPA has already been contacted in order to obtain an environmental impact assessment to formally identify the risks that this plant will have on the monarch population. This will take years to complete, and it's actually the primary reason why a recent railroad expansion project was shut down. So next time you see a monarch, count your blessings and say no to them. Happy to meet you. We're here for your support with resources and resources.
Thank you. The next commenter is Sharon White from Mantino.
Hi, I'm Sharon White. I'm not a longtime resident of Mantino, but I'm a longtime participator of things in Mantino. I've lived here a total of eight years, so I've seen two different events. One was before I was married, and one was after my husband passed. My grandparents, my great-grandparents, maybe my relatives, my sisters, I don't know, that's a lot. My brother and his wife, they all have lived in Mantino and have enjoyed it very much. One night, my husband and I were dating. He used to come up here and get a lot of the watering holes, and I had a really good time. We never had to worry about people mugging us or anything that would be dangerous on the street. And that was, that was, that was, we didn't know how much that was a wonderful thing that day. My feelings about what is proposed to happen here in Mantino is something that I feel changed about throughout most of my life. I am a shopper, and I believe in buyer's remorse. If you don't know what buyer's remorse is, buyer's remorse is you did something, you lost something, oh, you didn't like it, or it didn't work, but too bad, or you can bring it back to the store if you have a sales team. There may be someone here tonight who is not familiar with that term, but believe me, it has saved me many a times for my husband. That is when, I'm a little shaky. I am a product of Parkinson's disease. I was a farm girl, and the best thing that we ever saw was those yellow airplanes flying in the sky over the crops. And we'd sit out, we'd go, oh, we got some on us. Well, this is what got some on us got me. There are some instances where buyer's remorse does not apply, as with this factory that you are sometimes waiting for the end. True, we are not spending our money for this project, but we are selling out some more gifts from God. We have clean air, clean waters, a beautiful, quiet community, wonderful people who live here, who care about your town, the appearance, neighbors who watch out for the community and watch out for your children to make sure that nothing is violated. The main point I want to make is this. Mantino, as it is, a beautiful town, that is thanks in part to our mayor, he's done a wonderful job, and I'm just thrilled with this whole thing, and to many people that have come before us to see this evening, to this evening. The point that I am making is what Mantino is giving up for this factory will never recover if it goes bad. It's the pollen that needs, for the monarch butterfly, that eats us. So the, 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 the.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Your time's up.
Thank you.
The next, the next commenter is Amanda Piker from Mantino.
Hello. Good evening. I'm here, I'm just asking for two of you to please have a soul tonight. I am here as a concerned citizen of Mantino to remind the mayor and the board that you have all been elected to be public, to be servants of the public, which was stated in your oath when you took office. You all have a duty to the public, we the people. Public opposition to the Goshen plant is growing every day. The community has concerns about the lack of transparency, we have environmental concerns, and we also have concerns about the known ties to a communist regime. If you intend to stand by your oath of office and serve the public, you will shut down this project. I have provided a motion for one of you to read, one of you to second, and one of you, and one for all of you to back when new business is asked by the mayor. Any member can make this motion with any member seconding the motion. A discussion can then take place with a vote on this motion that I have provided this evening. If you choose not to support this motion, we the people gladly accept your resignation, or resignation. The motion, I motion that we as a board hereby recognize our duty to serve the public and recognize the public's concern over the Goshen facility. By recognizing that concern, I recommend that any and all forward progress be halted until such time a referendum be placed on the next ballot. This referendum hereby allowing the village board to gather or not gather a majority vote from the community on their desire to allow this business to join our community, and subsequently be granted any such licenses, and where necessary permits to operate, including any rezoning or building permits required to pursue those aspirations by the organization. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Paul Motel from Mantino.
Good evening. I gotta take the very opportunity to speak, or I'm short, so I haven't just finished. So what I have here in front of me, you all should be familiar with, especially you, Mr. Nugent, hundred and sixty-six pages of the zoning ordinances for Kankakee County. This facility, we're all talking about using Morris as an example, because it's the perfect example. It's an hour away where this disaster happened. First line, promoting and protecting the public health, safety, comfort, morals, and general welfare. Did anyone think of that? I'll keep going. Securing adequate light, pure air, and safety from fire and other dangers. Lessening or avoiding congestion of the public streets and highways. Existing residential areas designated for expansion and development be suitably located in relationship to businesses, commercial and industrial areas, and be protected against intrusion, which will interfere with decent living conditions. Again, I'm one mile north in Eagle's Landing. The evacuation radius for Morris was ten miles. Pietro will have to evacuate. I'll keep going. Certification on permits. No land shall be occupied or in use in a manner different than existing on the date of the passage of this chapter. At the entrance of my subdivision, two individuals are walking back and forth every day. They claim to be working for Goshen, at Goshen. Now, according to Mr. Marion, there's no permits for Goshen. What are they doing in that building? Do they have work visas? Or are we just turning a blind eye, playing by certain rules? Odorous matter. I haven't been here long enough to know, but I heard that the village came together to oppose an asphalt plant where the quarry is. Odorous matter defined in the zoning orders. The release of odorous matter from any operation, activity, or use in the light industrial act should not cause or create the concentration and access of one odor unit at any time.
That's time. Thank you. Your time's up. Uh, okay. Go ahead.
Airborne toxic air. No activity or operation shall cause at any time discharge of toxic matter across the lot lines. Did Morris not emit toxic matter across their property lines? Again, you know, as Amanda stated, you are public servants. The time for Q and A has come. We have all the questions, but we're not getting answers. We're referred to social media posts, a video in particular, and then the ability to comment and speak about it is turned off. How does that work? You can promote your agenda, but we can't speak against it? Has a tax impact study been provided? Again, last time I spoke, one year of tax revenue for this facility, you could just get enough money to buy a standard fire engine. What's being put in place for the residents? All we hear is we're doubling our revenue. All of the taxing bodies approved of this. How many families are gonna come to this area? While their taxes are frozen, mine went up fifteen percent this year. Every year after that, how much more will I have to pay to expand those schools for those families coming for these jobs? How much more will I have to pay for more first responders? I'm not complaining about paying for that stuff. I'm complaining about the fact that I can't have a thirty-year tax freeze. One thing sounds like special. The business revenue is to offset the residents. The business revenue is to offset the residents' tax revenue. Our teachers are underpaid, so underpaid it's disgusting. How many more of them are we going to have to hire? How much crime do you think will come to this area? The first three years I lived here, an individual was held at gunpoint in their own driveway. I moved down here to get rid, or escape from all that, as many of you have. Oak Forest, Homer Glen, Oak Lawn, Burbank?
It's time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next commenter is Bill Barnes from Mantino.
Thank you, our justice. Thanks for, I guess, the ability to talk. First, I'd like to say that I am all for business growth, job creation, whether it's with US-based or allied-based businesses and companies, not, not from a country that has a track record for stealing intellectual properties, tortures its own people, places them in work camps, and seeks world domination. Since the last meeting, I learned from a very reliable source that in addition to your failure to hold public discussion before announcing the news of a Chinese lithium battery manufacturer, the board really was never given an opportunity to vote on this. Rather, the only thing that was discussed was the windfall, I guess, of potential increase in tax revenue. After the last meeting, when asked by a reporter if he considered changing his mind based on the backlash from the community, Mayor Nugent simply said, no. If this doesn't scream of arrogance and disregard for community agreement, I don't know what does. I would ask all of you to look into your conscience and say, is a few million dollars a year, or whatever the tax revenue gained, worth the 10,000 people's lives and risks that could be created for this community and its environment? You realize, all you have to do is YouTube, lithium battery fires, you realize that one lithium car battery, or fire, takes about 10, I'm sorry, 30,000 gallons of water, which is, that's just one, that's roughly 20 times the amount of water that's stored in a typical fire truck. God forbid there would be a fire of a lithium battery manufacturer, where would the water come from? The lack of transparency that has been exhibited throughout this whole process, much like Joe Biden selling out America to foreign interests, you seem to have sold out the residents of Mantino. You're blatantly shunned, who should be the most valuable voice, and that's the people who pay the salaries and the taxes and the bills of this community. Instead, you actually avoid real dialogue, and you simply post attorney-approved content on the website, hoping that this will satisfy the people who are in disagreement. I can assure you, it's not. Thanks.
Thank you. The next commenter is David Kukin of Mantino.
Yes, thank you for my right to speak for you tonight. Regards to the first comments about the way we're going electric is maybe all this money that we're throwing at the CCP companies would be better spent updating our infrastructure to handle all the EVs that we're planning to make. And the other comment, as far as buying everything that's made in China, it's not our fault that our politicians years ago made it more beneficial for US companies to use the forced labor of China to make their things. I have a 25-year-old T-shirt of my son who died from the herbicides and pesticides in this area, that's made by Nike, but it was made by Nike in the USA. It used to be done, it's not done anymore, just for the money for the corporations. The lies, the lies of this, this concern is we're wondering why our local, state, and federal officials are allowing a CCP-sponsored company to be given special treatment, given huge amounts of taxpayer dollars, without answering some of the questions and concerns of local citizens. Why is there no environmental impact study available? Why is there no emergency response plan available? Why is there no wastewater disposal plan? Why is Goshen not responsible to send the billions of dollars they're getting in this deal to ride their own fire department and emergency response team? Why are you looking to build a plant dealing with toxic chemicals so close to existing private residences? Why are governing authorities giving special privileges to a CCP-subsidized company that would never be given to a US-based private company? By your silence to our questions, you're either unwilling or uncharing enough with Mantino residents to give us answers, or you yourselves don't have the answers. Now, that may be the case, because Goshen has not yet completed and submitted a full disclosure statement per 31 CFR Section 800.502 to the Committee on Foreign Investments, otherwise known as CIFIUS. Why are you, our local officials, and our state and federal governments allowing this? Now, for the what ifs, what if the Goshen and the CCP are lying to us? Oh, yes, CCP always tells us the truth, like the origins of the COVID virus, the environmental agreements they sign and then ignore, the forced labor camps where they persecute religious groups and those that disagree with them, telling the world that those don't exist, and on, and on, and on. What if, Mr. Mayor, one weekday morning, you go south on Poplar Street, make a right on Cook, heading west?
That's time.
And the first thing you see are the garage doors of the...
Your, your time is up, thank you.
Somebody give me some time.
Who is it?
Where the hell is the garage doors abandoned?
Excuse me, there's somebody that gave...
Mary Jo, Mary Jo gave up her time.
What if you see a toxic bomb?
Um, Mary Jo is not on the list.
Mary Jo was on the list, and I gave up my time to somebody that needed it.
Uh, Mary Jo's name is not on here, there's three names left, Mary Joan is not...
Mary Jo was one of the first few, Mary Jo Yaskinski.
Okay, okay.
Do you have a plan for the elementary school? And the daycare that's less than a mile from that facility? Do you have a plan for the 55-plus community across the street from the daycare? Do you have a plan for the seniors, some of which have ramps to enter their residences in the 55-plus manufacturer home communities that this town has? Are you just concerned enough, just enough about those people who levy taxes on those ramps and porches? You, Mr. Mayor, you, the village board, the state of Illinois, our federal officials, do you have a plan to protect the veterans at the Mantino Veterans Homes? Those people have fought and sacrificed for all of us, fought against oppressors very similar to the CCP. Don't say that these ifs can't happen. As a person involved daily in the hazardous materials profession, I can personally attest to the fact that mistakes happen.
Thank you. The next commenter is Sharon Calabria of Mantino.
I'll be okay, all right. My name is Sharon Calabria, I'm a 30-year resident of Mantino. I have children here in Mantino, I have grandchildren in the elementary and middle schools, which are less than one mile away from this proposed plant. Mary Sears Daycare Center is also less than one mile away, as well as all the multiple residential areas around this area of the plant. My concern is the very real possibility of an explosion and fire at this plant. I would like to know what the plan is. How and where do you plan to evacuate the children? How long would such an evacuation take? Does your plan include having our children, and the babies from Mary Sears, hold their breath so that they don't breathe in these highly poisonous and deadly fumes until they can be relocated? Now, lest you think I'm just some hysterical grandmother, I will cite for you two, just two of my sources. From NBC Chicago concerning the Morris plant, the Esco. Nearly 100 tons of lithium batteries involved in the large Morris industrial fire, this is June 29th, 2021. Nearly 10 tons of lithium batteries were involved in a large industrial fire that led to emergency evacuations and a large-scale response as authorities warned of highly poisonous and very deadly fumes. That's where I got that, and other places too. As these batteries get wet, they short out, they ignite, and they explode, and that's the problem that we're having. So we started our initial attack with water, and then learned very quickly that that was not going to be a good avenue for extinguishing this fire. Firefighters were forced to back away from the building and stop using water. The biggest hazard we're dealing with right now is the smoke or the fumes. This gas is highly poisonous, it's very deadly. So again, I ask you, will the children be able to hold their breaths and not breathe any of these poisonous gases into their lungs while we attempt to evacuate hundreds of them? Then, from the Boston Herald of August this year, battery fires on the rise, is it time to ban electric vehicles? I would say yes. The New York Fire Department recently reported that so far this year, there have been 108 lithium battery fires in New York City alone, which have injured 66 people and killed 13. According to...
That's time.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
I just want to say one more thing, and that is the commissioner warned that this is the most, that the fires from the lithium batteries have surpassed those in three years, have surpassed those started by cooking and smoking as the most common cause of fatal fires in New York City. I ask you, what were you thinking? Are children's rights on the top of this plan?
Thank you. The next, the next commenter is Francine Fatima of Mantino.
You've all heard of Alexander Solzhenitsyn, I'm sure, patriot, out of our country. But he said, "The simple step of a courageous individual is not to take part in the lie." Well, what is the lie? Well, right now, I have to say, the lie is that we're to completely ignore the fact that this battery factory is a communist arm. It is definitely Communist China. They are trying to make a foothold in any community they can. They've tried in Kentucky, in Tennessee, in North Dakota, in Wisconsin, in Michigan, and of course, here in Little Mantino. These wonderful speakers that we've had, there have been 40 that I can remember, that have spoken anti, okay, so we're negative, but it's a positive thing that we're, we're so proud of our community and supporting. But now, there's articles aside coming in the Daily Journal, Scott Bertrand, whoever he is, since he's lived here 55 years, he looks to be that age. He's all for a battery factory. And I think, how can he be so ignorant and live here? But that's what happens sometimes. And so, another, Mr. Tibbs also, I mean, it's just so interesting, they make the paper, and with all these people here, no reporter has suggested they have their picture in the Daily Journal, much less off-line article. But the negative, I say negative, people who are supporting this Goshen factory, it's just too bad. I came here, my husband and I, from Chicago, then Oak Lawn, and now here, for 20 years. I, I, I just hate to see this destruction. It really hurts. Please rescind your vote on this acceptance of the factory. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Carrie Rolniak of Mantino.
I feel like I'm a very patriotic person, okay? See that flag? I've already looked at the flag. What does that flag stand for? We should all be united here. And this comment is not making us united, it's pulling us apart. This whole world is in shambles right now, we all know it, okay? So why don't we pull together? Why can't we have something when we vote on this? At least, it would be giving us a chance to see who wants this. Because when I go out and talk to people, people don't want this, okay? You know what we want? We want the quality of life. This goal, you're on the safety committee, right? You researched this? So you're going to stick up for my safety and everyone in Kenkey County, Will County, and that, that this is safe, right? That this plant coming here is safe. Because if that's what you're doing, you're on the safety committee. And you know what? I want clean air, and I want clean water. And that's not going to happen here. I have a family member that is in the union, who happens to work for GM, who is certified hybrid cars, who went to the GM's school. And you know what they told him there? They told them, if this, and this is one car battery, if that drops on the floor, the teacher told them, run like hell, it's a ticking time line. That is one car. What is a whole factory going to do? That, who's going to pay? If we have to leave our houses to evacuate, who's going to pay for that? It's not on your homeowners. Who's going to pay for it? Where am I going to go? Where's my cat going to go? Where's my dog going to go? Where are people's old fish turtles, whatever? This is families, where are they going to go? And who's going to pay for it? It's not fair, you guys, come on. Really think about this. This is from my heart. You know how hard it is for someone to stand up here and talk like this? It takes a lot. But I'm just saying, I'm American, and I want us to all unite and be together. I know you want jobs, I know you do, you guys want jobs. I know it's all about that, you guys, stay on together. And that's fine, but do it for the safety of us. Don't do it for something just to have it here, just because they think these EV batteries are growing. They might be growing, but is it good? No, do your research. It's like having sense, I don't even understand. I really don't get it. Like, I don't know, are you guys going to all sit there? Like, fine, get jobs, build it. You know what? But can you feel good at night? If a fire started there, or something happened, where's all the water going to go that cools those batteries? That's going to go on the ground. You can't take a million gallons and just hide it, it's not going to contaminate anything. Do you guys really think that? Really? Put your head on your pillow and think about it tonight when you go to bed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That completes the public comment section for tonight. Village President's report, just to respond to some of the comments. The village has been asked a number of questions in regards to the Goshen facility, and has replied to the questions through our frequently asked questions section on the village website. The FAQ section will continue to be updated, and the dates of the updates will be listed on the pages as they are updated. If the public has questions that they want answered, they can submit those questions on our website or in person to the village administrator, and if they are pertinent questions to the project, we will answer them to the best of our ability. Also, there's been questions about the hiring timeline and when Goshen would plan on potentially hiring people. I've been told from the Kenkey-Iroquois Livingston Workforce Board that the timeline, at this time, it's just, I'll read from their note, it's important to note that this is an innovative facility, they're using the latest technology... that's using the latest technology, which means Goshen's is still developing the job requirements for these positions, but has made it a priority to finalize job requirements in order to start the hiring process. The first round of hiring will tentatively occur by the end of December 2023, and the tentative plan is to hire 20 to 40 individuals by that time. At the first round of hiring, Goshen will hire throughout 2024 with a tentative plan to be fully staffed by early 2025. To apply for these positions, tentatively, the open positions will be posted on the company website and eventually on an internet portal. The workforce board will be working with area partners such as Kenke Community College, NAACP, local municipalities, Kenke County Government, local unions, and other interested parties will market the open positions through different social media platforms, post at different locations, and other recruiting ways to help spread the word when the positions are posted. In addition, tentative plans or in-person, for in-person hiring events are being discussed to ensure that everyone has access to apply for these positions.
Have they already got zoned, Havi?
This is just, this is the information that I've been given as far as their hiring process. Just giving you the information. Village Administrator's report, Mr. LaRocque.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick updates. We wanted to get out there that the deadline is fast approaching for the property tax rebate. You have to have your application in by October 31 at 4:00 p.m. We will not accept any applications after that, either via mail or by dropping it off.
I have two signs to make.
You do have to have lived in your house for the full year of 2022 in order to be eligible for the tax rebate. Fill out the application. There's a couple of supporting documents you would need to bring in. Again, make sure you get it turned in no later than October 31 at 4:00 p.m. We also have a camera rebate program. You install a security camera that points to a street or an alley. You're entitled to get a rebate up to $100 towards the purchase of that. The camera has to have been purchased between June 1 and December 31 of this year to get the rebate. Again, will be the amount that you paid up to $100. Both of those applications are on our website, or you can stop by Village Hall and pick them up if you want to apply for either of those rebates. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. LaRocque. Committee reports, Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Boyce.
I'll make the comparison right in the light. A motion to authorize the purchase of a Kubota RTV 1100 from Alta Equipment, Orland Park, for a cost of $44,201.26.
That is a state bid? Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Properties and Recreation, Mr. Martin.
For Old Business, consideration for new business would be a motion to award a bid for the Thieves Park Phase 1 improvements to R&amp;R Inc., Bradley, Illinois, for a cost of $91,321. No meaning, we don't have a set yet.
Do you have the report as far as bids that were received for that? How many you got?
If I can remind the trustees, please turn your microphones on when you're speaking. Thank you.
There were four bids, the lowest bid to R&amp;R, as Trustee Martin mentioned.
Four bids, and that was the lowest?
That was the lowest.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Public Safety and Health, Mrs. Dole.
Thank you, Mayor. My next public safety meeting is on November 8 at 7:00 a.m. here in the village boardroom. Want to remind everybody about trick-or-treat. Trick-or-treat hours are 5 to 7. Have your kids bring a flashlight. Make sure they cross at the intersections. If you want trick-or-treaters, put your porch light on. If you don't, then they should respect that you don't want any visitors. And have the girls or the kids wear bright clothing and maybe put the stripes on the side that are fluorescent, that they can see them. And also, the cars that are driving around, make sure that they're driving slow and carefully and watching for kids because even though you tell them to walk across at the intersections, they don't always do that. So let's be careful and make sure you're aware of your surroundings and make sure you don't, the kids also are aware of their surroundings. So everybody needs to be safe that night, and have a good time.
Mrs. Dole, Planning and Zoning, Mr. Crockett.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any items on the agenda this evening, but we do have a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting scheduled for October 24, 7:00 a.m. here in the village boardroom. And the next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for November 14, 6:00 p.m., also here in the village boardroom. And that's all I have for this evening.
Mr. Crockett, Finance, Mr. Geske.
I think the matter of my have is payment of bills in the amount of $928,420.05. There have been no TIF bills or no bills paid between board cycle. Our next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for November 8 at 7:00 a.m. And that's all I have.
Mr. Geske, General Government, Mr. Phillips.
I don't have nothing on the agenda, Mayor.
So the items that will be voting on the consent agenda tonight are as follows. Under Old Business, we have nothing. Under New Business, we have a motion to receive and place on file the annual treasurer's report for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, and authorize its publication. We have a motion to authorize a bid of a Kubota RTX 1100 from Alta Equipment, Orland Park, for a cost of $44,201.26, which is a source well price. We have a motion to award the bid to Thieves Park Phase 1 improvements to R&amp;R Inc., Bradley, Illinois, for a cost of $91,321. And a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $928,420.05, of which none are TIF. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted on individually? Seeing none, I would accept the motion to take a single roll call, vote on the question of passage of the agenda items as read.
I make the motion.
Motion by Phillips, second by Geske, roll call.
Phillips?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Motion carries and accept the motion to approve by ominous votes the ordinances, resolutions, motions, and orders contained in the consent agenda as read.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Boyce, second by Crockett, roll call.
Boyce?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries. Comments tonight? Mr. Boyce, do you have anything? Mr. Martin? Mr. Dole?
No comments.
Mr. Crockett?
Nothing this evening.
No, sir.
Mr. Geske, Mr. Phillips. I have nothing further, then motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Geske.
Second.
Second by Dole, roll call.
Geske?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
And Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. Motion. Thank you very much for coming and for watching.